All right. So first off, this is public comment. For those of you that would like to say something, you're more than welcome to. Please state your name and address for the record, and we'll start with inside the room first, and then we'll better remember what that's doing.
This last week, as you all know, your town, your town spoke loud and clear what they desire, what they don't desire through this town. You are the chief executive officers of this town. You are to legislate. You are to appoint boards members. You are not to recruit businesses that don't fit in here. You do have the power to appoint boards. Perhaps the Economic Development Commission should be empowered to recruit companies that fit here. Thank you for considering that.
Anyone else?
Hi, good evening. My name is John Brown, or 12th, 12th, we're in Manhattan. With the recent activities on industrial restricted sites here, has there been any talk about ordinances or noise or heavy trucks coming into town like that use brake brakes or raking? Because they would get past residential areas, and also if they couldn't get into the property, would they be allowed to park or would it be an ordinance to grant that? If I'm in the wrong place, I'm looking at another committee. I've kind of heard this.
Sure, this is public comment where you're allowed to make a comment like you just did. In years past, like there was a simple question, you would normally would probably answer it. But the questions that are thrown at us lately, I would hate to answer something wrong and then be held accountable on social media. So, so all I simply ask is if you have a real serious question you want to answer, email me or any one of our board members, but not all of us. And then I will reach out and figure out a way to get you the answer you're looking for. And if it's not me, I'll get it to whatever department needs it to get an answer.
Okay, just a general question is, do you guys handle those kinds of ordinances in this?
That might be plain word when it comes to exhaust brake brakes. I live on feeding those roads. I hear them every day, too. I really don't know that answer, but I will find out. And if you email me, I will send you in the right direction. I'll give you that. Yes, we are. Thanks. Yeah. Anyone else? How come on Zoom, Mr. Mobley? Do you see anything?
Joanne. Joanne says she can't hear.
Okay.
I can hear you. Okay, Doug and Joe, but the people at the table, you cannot hear them. I don't know if they don't have a microphone there.
They did.
The audio was horrible.
Okay, thank you. Well, you know, it's a work in progress, as you know.
Yeah, I do have a couple of questions, though.
In the public comment, go ahead. Name and address.
Joanne LeBlanc, 38 Reservoir Road. The first one is the links that are on the town website with the meetings don't seem to be working the last couple of times. I have to manually put them in, the ID and the password, which is fine, but they used to work. Secondly, up until this whole Carvana thing started, I was getting email notifications with the agenda and minutes. And then that suddenly just stopped. So I signed up again for the ones that I wanted a couple of weeks ago, and I still haven't gotten any notifications. So I called and spoke to a couple of different people today at the town hall, and I was, and I think the way I understood it correctly was that you have to get them online now. So I don't know if that's correct or not. And I was, I heard from somebody today that they got an email notification last Friday with the COVID numbers. I did not get that as well. And I'm on the town website right now under the COVID section. And it says weekly statistics updated on 7/22, but the last one listed is June 11. And I like to get those. So maybe you can pass the word along that things aren't.
Yes, thank you. I know I heard something this morning about some people not getting certain things. I haven't gotten them in years, to be honest with you. But I haven't pitched, though, because I kind of like the quietness. But yes, we'll figure it out, and hopefully within a couple of days, we'll get you up and running.
Wait, thank you.
Anyone else on Zoom? Nope, okay. Acknowledged payable warrant 2202 dated 7/20/21 in the amount of $293,281.57. Acknowledged payable warrant 2202 dated 7/12/21 in the amount of $680,054.54. That's the minutes, their open session date at 7/12/21.
Russ Fox will make that motion, Mr. Chairman.
Doug Mobley will second a motion, Mr. Chairman.
All those in favor, Joe DDI.
Russ Fox, huh?
Doug Mobley, I.
The next up is executive session dated 7/12/21.
Russ Fox will make that move.
Doug Mobley will second the motion.
All those in favor, Joe DDI.
Doug Mobley, I.
So. The dog here. We'll need a motion to open the hearing.
Russ Fox will make that motion.
I'll second.
All those in favor, Joe DDI.
Russ Fox, huh?
Doug Mobley, I.
Okay, is there anyone that needs to be sworn in? No, in reading of the notification. So the purpose is to review and discuss alleged violations on the decision in order of the board issued person MGL 140-157. The dog known as Theo and owned by Jennifer and Sean Landman to be a nuisance in ordering the Langins to take certain actions to remedy Theo's nuisance behavior. The board will be assessing whether the Langins have violated the following requirements of the order. To obtain and install perimeter and other enclosure fencing. Number two, to properly restrain Theo when outside on the Langins' property and/or to obtain and complete behavioral training of Theo from a certified dog behaviorist and/or trainer. Upon hearing, if upon hearing the board's findings, the Langins have to violate, violate the board's order, and the board shall consider and may employ any and all remedies available under MGL C140-157, including but not limited to seizure or impoundment of the subject dog. Good evening, ma'am. You're up next.
Or from there, either.
Or from there, it's fine. And if it's a shortened version, that's fine, too, but I don't think there's much really to discuss. What you got?
As we discussed last, yeah, last time we were here. And it's still, I have not received notification that the training is safe place. I have received notification that any of the criteria you met other than gentle the dog out.
Okay, thank you. Make statements regarding alleged violations, other parties such as police or witness, give testimony. Anyone like to give any testimony? All right, defendants will respond to that testimony. All right, that's good.
Are the Langins here? She served, she did serve. I've just, yeah, I think I know just about everybody in the room, but just to be sure. Mr. and Mrs. Langen are not here.
It says next is a motion to close the hearing. Is that correct?
I think we close the hearing and make a determination. Russ Fox will make a motion to close the hearing.
Second.
All those in favor, Joe DDI.
Russ Fox, huh?
Doug Mobley, I.
Select for deliveries and which is a finding of fact. What you got, gentlemen?
Well, I think it's pretty obvious, Mr. Chairman, that, you know, a fence has not been put up. And obviously, we have no certificate that the dog has been a true behaviorist or a trainer. I don't know about properly restrained outside language properly. I don't know if we can make that determination. But in general, our requests have not been met. I guess this has gone back and forth with legal counsel as to what we can do, those different remedies, I guess, that we can try. A letter from the land said that they were moving and in the process selling the house. So. Carl, correct me if I'm wrong, you know, on this, one of the things that we can do is impound the animal. Is that correct?
Right, the, the options by town council have gone along the lines of impounding a seizure of the animals. So that's, those are your options at this point, because you've already, you already had a findings effect of the dog disposition. You already gave notice. You already instructed what needed to be done within a time period. Animal control and police have been monitoring it, and those issues have not been resolved.
So I'm going to make a suggestion. To see what the rest of the board wants to do, but I would suggest that we begin the process of impounding the dog until the Langins move out of the town sector. If in fact, we can locate the dog and the dog is still in the town sector.
We kind of talked about that a little bit last week. I'm not opposed. So that being, I'll make that a form of motion. I would second the motion.
All those in favor, Joe DDI.
Russ Fox, huh?
Doug Mobley. Yeah, I don't think we want to discuss that.
Yeah.
Yes.
All right, thank you. Yeah, yeah, yeah. Okay, so Regional School Committee, joint interview to fill a vacancy. So school committee members are here. How you doing, folks? So excited. All right, you want to come up?
I think they, they're right there.
The microphone, also.
For the candidates, yeah.
Yeah. We want to make sure as soon as folks can hear this.
So what would be the four remaining members that should identify themselves?
Yeah. You guys could introduce yourselves. We would appreciate.
Jeff Wolf, Chairman of the Regional School Board.
Ryan Hoka, of the Regional School Board.
John Chau, member of the school. Rob Skibson, member of the school.
All right, so we'll get the first one to come down, right?
We want to, how do you want to do that? To do that with everybody in the room? Do you ask the other to leave?
I would ask them to leave, right? Wouldn't that make sense?
I would.
No sense.
You know?
Or would you like? First one, you take the hit as the other two, Chelsea and Patrick. So Chelsea and Patrick, please rise. There, who wants to ask for them somewhere? You got it.
This way.
Where's where they go on that? With our luck. This is somewhat dangerous. Do not know if we're going to do a decision tonight or not, but let us see. We usually do do a decision, but I just have to say that. For all the questions. If you have seven questions, we'll be asked at the end. You can ask us questions if you'd like. We'll try to answer them the best we can.
Aaron, you're up.
What's that, sir? Do you have the questions in handy?
Yes, sir, we do.
Then you're going to be number one since you asked the most questions.
Yes.
Plus you have a microphone.
All right, I guess I have the first question, Karen. Or Hannah, you have a camera or a tattoo?
And the microphone's right next to Hannah. You can hopefully, you can tap to see if it's on. Beautiful.
So the question I had is why are you interested in becoming a member of the Southwood Town Grandville Regional School District Regional School Committee?
I'm looking for a way to get involved in the town and also show my daughters that it's good to be involved in the public community.
Pop right into the microphone, though. Okay, don't worry about looking at them.
You can even pull it closer to you.
A little closer to you, because someone's going to say they couldn't hear you. Raise it up.
What issues in education are of particular interest to you in the Southwood Town Grandville Regional School District?
At the moment, I don't think there are any issues per se. I don't really have any problems with the Southwood community, Southwood School community. But I would be a strong position maker and be able to help do some of these issues if they are summarized.
What experiences or skills do you bring to qualify you for this position?
I have been in the Southwood School community, high school.
Excuse me, yeah, bring it right up to you, because I can barely hear you right here.
You're fine. Don't worry.
What previous committee experience do you have, and how will it benefit the Southwood Town Grandville Regional School District?
Unfortunately, I don't have any previous committee experience, but I am a strong voice, and I think I would be able to help others that can't be called up.
You can just hold on for now. Just hold. Sir?
Oh, you want me to ask? Hannah, how do you keep abreast of issues that are currently facing the Southwood Town and Grandville Regional School District?
Knowledge is power. Being involved, staying involved helps. And communicating with people within the community to find out what is actually going on is the best way to stay ahead of everything.
Thank you. What is your understanding of the role that the school committee plays in the governance of the district?
Making sure that the kids in our school system have the best education possible and a good environment for them to be able to learn.
Thank you. Last question. You're doing great. What type of commitment will you make to the school?
I would make the commitment just like anything else that I do. I would give 100%. And if I can't, then I will step down. But as of right now, I feel that I can commit to this as much as possible.
Thank you. That concludes the questions. Do you have anything for us?
No.
All right, so we're going to bring the next one in, and then the next one in, and after that, we'll probably have a discussion and see what we think of those. You can do whatever you want.
You can stay, or you can, you can go out, either way.
Either way.
Now you know all the questions.
And if you leave, we will notify you either way.
Um. Chelsea. Chelsea, you're using the microphone. Keep it as close as you can.
So a few questions. At the end, you can ask us one if you'd like, or two, and then I'm assuming you'll make some kind of decisions at some point.
So Chelsea, we're going to start over here, over to them. Why are you interested in becoming a member of the Southwood Town and Grandville Regional School District Regional School Committee?
So about 10 years ago, I started my first teaching job here at Carter Mill. And I was lucky enough to land eighth grade math. And we got the great, best, best year ever. Don't tell my other students I said that, though. And I was teaching a bunch of math, algebra, different levels of math. And it killed me because some of my students were very capable, but yet they were still counting on their fingers. And I was supposed to teach them all this algebra at them in high school. I have these big textbooks. And I just realized then that I want to go back. Where can you go back to, to make the biggest impact on student learning? I can go back and be an elementary math specialist, which I did, and help kids learn their early literacy skills. But I can also go back to the point where you're choosing the curriculums or supporting curriculums and making sure the budgets support the curriculums that they need to. I can go back to the policies and helping develop initiatives that will, in turn, really impact student learning across the board. So it started there, and I went back, and I just want to be able to continue giving back in the way that I know how, where I'm best suited to.
What issues in education are of particular interest to you in the Southwood Town Grandville Regional School District?
Well, I may have just divulged that I'm really interested in math education. But overall, I'm most concerned about making sure that our students have a great community to grow up in, which starts with really great education and classrooms and teachers, making sure that we have the resources to recruit the best teachers. And the programs that we need to create the kind of community that the kids can grow up in and feel like, and feel proud and a part of. So that's the big scope. I'm really excited about our math initiatives that have started and developed. I know we're diving into literacy. And I really like developing policies, too, on the side.
What experience or skills do you bring that qualify you for this position?
I am a parent, a educator, curriculum developer. But I've also been on the school committee. So that helps a lot, because all of those things don't necessarily come together to be the work that is actually done on the school board. Have gone to school and studied educational policy and things like that. So I do think that I bring those skills to the table, those kind of hard skills. But also my enthusiasm and love for this work is pretty big. As you know, it takes a lot of time, and if you don't like it, you might not find it as great to make the time for it. What previous committee experience do you have and how will it benefit the Southwood Town Grandville Regional School District? So I was recently was on the Southwood Town Grandville Regional School District Committee. And I really loved being part of the policy subcommittee and negotiations. I would love to jump back into those areas if possible. I've done some work with the capital expenditure committee. I was going to, to see how it all comes together for the big budget. So, yeah, I have some pretty relevant experience recently.
How do you keep abreast of issues that are currently facing the Southwood Town and Grandville Regional School District?
I have a lot of little worries. Some of them are under five feet tall. So I try to stay as involved as I can in my child's life. I try to stay involved as a parent. When I was on the committee, I tried to act as someone who spread information, kind of a conduit of information between parents and the district as much as possible. I checked the ever updating Facebook page, the minutes, listened to the meetings. But I also keep an eye on national news and developments that are coming down the line and does he at the mass state level, too?
What is your understanding of the role that the school committee plays in the governance of the district?
It's a good one. So I've learned that the school committee is responsible for budget, creating a budget that is responsible physically, but will also move the school district forward. And also for evaluating the superintendent and really that's kind of an interesting job, because it's so similar to how I'm evaluated as a teacher. Really looking at their criteria and thinking about all of the things that have happened over the years or over the year. And really critically evaluating what has gone right, where is our room for growth. Such an important responsibility. So budget, evaluating the superintendent, creating policies that protect the rights of our students. Making sure they're updated and not from 1996 when I was sitting somewhere. And, but also I learned that it's not your job to be micromanaging. Teachers or principals, it's your job to kind of set the goals for the district and help development support them. But not create the procedures in the exact packages.
Last question. What type of commitment will you make, Chelsea?
Really big one. I think that that's also something that's definitely what I pondered before running this spring, too. It is a large commitment. It's not just the whole board meetings. There's the side meetings, there's the reading and the preparing and asking questions beforehand. And there's a fact that you are now accessible to the public to answer questions and help them out or help them understand things. That I found is something that I really enjoy doing. And so I have not had a problem in the past, and I don't foresee a problem in the future, making that commitment.
That concludes the questions. Do you have anything for us?
How much will you get paid?
Get paid weekly.
Yeah.
Thank you. Thank you.
Patrick, use the microphone.
Yep, as close as possible.
All right.
So we're gonna ask you a few questions. When we're done, you can ask us a question if you'd like, or two. And then we may or may not make a decision like we normally do. We do not have to stick around. If you don't, we'll, we'll get a hold of you either way.
Okay.
Thank you.
Michael, we're starting with you, Pat. Uh, why are you interested in becoming a member of the Southwick Town and Granville Regional School District Regional School Committee?
Okay, so I have some hammer and bells here. I have a vision, clear purpose, with the ability and courage to work on positive change within our school district. With keeping an eye on our fiscal budget. Also be a part of a team who has our children's best interests in mind. I feel strongly about effective communication within our district. I believe it is extremely important to keep our students embarrassed and informed.
What, uh, what issues in education are of particular interest to you in the Southwick Town and Granville Regional School District?
Uh, I don't have any particular issues. I feel that it's important to ensure the administration promotes a high quality student center instruction. And to keep teachers focused with this vision. My overall result, like, I would like to see our students progress towards personal goals and have a social and emotional skills to be productive members of society.
What experience or skills do you bring that qualify you for this position?
Basically, I have over 30 years' experience working for Verizon, both in union and management, 16 years of management. I am a hardworking, dedicated employee. Again, working for a Fortune 10 company, responsible for overall budgets. Again, dealing directly with the public, with employees, fellow coworkers. I have budgets that I need to uphold. And I have a great working relationship with my team, with my peers. And I feel that my listening skills and effective communication is really key and it'd be an integral part of this committee.
What previous committee experience do you have in Southwick Town and Granville Regional School District?
Okay, so previous to, you know, well, committees I've been on, basically, I was a baseball coach here in town for seven years. I was on the SRC Board of Directors for baseball. I was also the formerly coordinator for first, second graders, third and fourth graders. I was also a safety coordinator for Westfield Uthaki, along with Amelia Park. I'm on various committees throughout my job at work in project management. There's, you know, structured organizations within my, my own employment.
Patrick, how do you keep abreast of issues that are currently facing the Southwick Town and Granville Regional School District?
Okay, so basically I like to address the issues, you know, privately within my own family and then kind of educate myself through, you know, the newspapers and, and also interviewing family, I mean, friends and neighbors. And then I like to formulate basically education, educated decision before I comment publicly or privately. So I would say I'm an effective listener and somebody who likes to pay the opinion of all sides before I formally a decision.
Okay. What is your understanding of the role that the school committee plays in the governance of the district?
Okay, so, um, basically there's three, three particular roles that the school committee plays, and that is direct maintain policies, which govern the district. The second is to approve and monitor the budget of the school system and finally to hire and evaluate the superintendent of that district.
Patrick, last question. What type of commitment will you make to the regional school?
You have my full undivided attention and commitment here. I have three children, my youngest is 13, a 17-year-old, and I have a 19-year-old graduated last year. I'm fully committed and dedicated to the time of living and I'd like to see positive change. I think I want to bring that.
Thank you. That concludes the questions. Do you have anything for us?
I do not.
All right, you're more than welcome to hang around. We may or may not make a decision. Thank you. Is that Mike off? Thank you. Mr. Plage.
I think we pass a rule that will shorten the name of the Southwick Town and Granville because that's three quarters of each question. Yeah, and we all agree on that call for.
Mr. Chairman, in the past, I think a couple of times I've been involved in it, we've taken nominations for candidates. After that, we usually will take a vote. That might be, that'd be my suggestion that we continue that practice.
All right. Mr. Wolf.
Comment?
Is there anyone you would like to nominate?
I would like to nominate Chelsea Berry. Come on this.
Any, any? Anything else for you folks?
Sure. Any other nominations?
Yeah.
Sure. I'd like to nominate Patrick Jubb to fulfill the remainder of this term for that position.
Okay. Anyone else?
I would second the motion to deny Patrick Jubb. And just say that I would thank all the folks that came and talked to us tonight. That's an incredibly difficult set of questions to go through a public and have this deliberation. And I could just share that my thought with it being a one-year position essentially until there's an election tends to lean towards putting someone in there to give an opportunity to someone to have that year to see whether they want to stay involved or not. I think that I thank Chelsea for, for her commitments and I know she'll continue to give back to the community. That can be counted as well for her.
Okay, is there anyone else?
Yeah, I would. I'd like to nominate Anna Catherine. Let's just get them all out there. I think, sure. First of all, I think she has, it is a minor distinction, but she's certainly the newest parent in the town of Southwick that I'm aware. And I know she put forth, she expressed an interest to me, we talked about this. I appreciate her coming out. We've been on a big kick to get new people. I appreciate Mr. Jubb and Ms. Berry also for coming out and for Mr. Jubb being a first-timer to come out. But I've, I've been on a drive, although I've been admonished for doing it, for recruiting new people to come out, to be on boards and commissions. So I applaud everyone that's done it. But I, for discussion, I'll bring forth Anna Catherine.
Thank you.
How about Carl?
I don't have any options. No, I think we have three great candidates and we say this all the time, but we mean it. We've got to make, only one person can, can do it. I would suggest that we attempt to do a vote, see if somebody can get a majority. If not, maybe a weighted thing, the top two, and then that would be my suggestion.
Put a better raise on it, don't you think?
Well, just, well, we can do it by raising a hand. Who was the first candidate that was nominated?
Chelsea was first. We talked about first was Chelsea, right? Okay, so showing hands for Chelsea. I'll go along with that. Right, so that's three. And then next is Mr. Jubb. Showing hands for Mr. Jubb. There you go, there's three. Wonderful. And then Ms. Johnson. I'll go with Ms. Johnson too.
I think you go with both of them.
This isn't the presidential.
Oh, it's not? So there you go. So you have a tie so far.
So now we do the top two.
Right.
Yeah. So once again.
And a thank you if you're there. All right.
Two left is.
Two left would be Chelsea.
All right. All right. So now the voting is a slight clean again.
Yes.
Chelsea is one of the.
Round choice votes.
So Chelsea first. All right, and then Mr. Jubb, Patrick. There you go. You got four. All right, Mr. Patrick wins. So need a motion? There was a motion made by him and it was seconded by him, correct?
Yes, now we got to go start everybody's roll call vote.
Okay.
Yeah. Make it official.
Ralph Stevenson, Patrick Jubb. John Chans, Patrick Jubb. Jeff Paul, Patrick Jubb.
Ryan Crutt, Patrick Jubb.
Doug Mogul and Mr. Jubb.
Joe Didi, Mr. Jubb.
Russ Fox, Mr. Jubb.
There you go. Welcome aboard.
Congratulations.
I think they have to get sworn in and all that.
Oh, yeah.
Oh, yeah. Not sworn out.
That's the next meeting.
Yeah. That would be at the clerk's office, I believe. Unless they do it somewhere else. Okay.
Right? You do it at the clerk's office for the school.
Well, we thank the superintendent for attending tonight.
Thank you for having me.
Recognize her. Well, I was gonna mention Amy, but I thought the superintendent would probably do it.
If you ever want to come on the side, the water's warm over here. We'd love to have you.
Thank you.
Thanks, John.
I will, I will.
Yeah.
You don't have to stand. You don't have to stand.
You can. Yeah, let's do that since they, they came down there while it was still daylight.
All right, reappoint planning board ultimate. Come on up, folks.
I don't think we're gonna have to do round choice voting on this one, Mr. Chair.
Point, point of war, Mr. Chair.
We have the crisis here under the time.
Mr. Sutton. What you did. Uh, relevant to a proceeding earlier during the meeting, are you aware that Theo might have skipped the state for good?
Dog.
The dog, the dog, David.
Yes, it's on the lam.
The dog is gone. He has left the common one. Very well. We'll let the AC on them and happy birthday.
Thank you very much.
Yeah.
That is your process, Mr. Jackson.
Oh. No, I know, well, you can.
I had the end design, I would need to run there for a second. I'm like checking the doors.
Yeah, go right ahead.
For those. Impossible.
Oh.
Impossible. So for those following at home or those that are unfamiliar with the process, this is actually part of our zoning code of chapter 184, 185, section 40. That the planning board is an elected board and there's an associate member that is a joint appointment of the select board and the planning board. And we did solicit letters of interest. We had exactly one. It's the current alternate, for reasons known only to her, has elected to subject herself to another year.
Well, all the current hype we had, that's all you got for letters.
Shocking, isn't it shocking, I say?
Do we have medical on this board?
No, you don't. We offered.
What if they don't?
Medical. There you go. So, and then it just becomes a nomination in a second and then a roll call vote of both boards and it's a majority. And you are appointed, you have no choice now that you're sitting here. So I personally want to thank you for your service and for all you do. The associate is primarily a non-voting member unless a member of the board is unable to act on a petition due to absence or conflict. So, you know, having sat on that seat for a few years, many moons ago, it's a great place to live and learn and become, get an understanding of chapter 185 and how it works. And so such as the opportunity arises for you then to sit in on a hearing or someday when a vacancy arises on the board to, to assume the role and be smart about it from the beginning. I think it's hugely, hugely important. So therefore, I'm turning the meeting back over to the chair to get a motion.
All right, I'm looking for a motion.
I'll give that honor to the chairman of the plan.
I will make a motion to point Jessica Warren as the associate member of the board.
Associate.
Associate member of the planning board.
Second half. All those in favor? No, it's a roll call.
So.
Russ Fox, aye.
Joe Didi, aye.
Doug Mogul, aye.
Marcus Phelps, aye.
Abner, aye.
David Sutton, aye.
Congratulations.
Didn't get to say it.
We do appreciate it.
Thank you.
Jessica has done an incredible job as an associate.
She has.
Always honoring.
Would that, does the role of secretary come with that or no?
What?
The role of secretary to come with that?
Well, for now.
A lot of work does tend to fall there.
Third base.
Yeah, later.
Yeah.
Absolutely. In my opinion. You'll be, I can sub to those guys. Esquire, Beg Lane. The point is to learn, right?
Yeah. Right. We need to adopt the limits firing vote for mass DORs asset reach for life guidelines. Yeah, sure.
On behalf of the clerk, select board vote regarding useful lives. Hi, clerk of the select board of the town of Southwick, Massachusetts certified that a meeting on a select board held on July 26, 2021 had a meeting of all members of the board were duly notified at which forum was present. The following vote was unanimously passed out of which it is on the official record of the board in my custody. Voted that the maximum useful life of departmental equipment listed below to be financed with the proceeds of a $325,000 borrowing authorized by the vote of the town passed on May 18, 2021. Article number eight is hereby determined pursuant to general law, chapter 44, section 7, parentheses 1, to be as follows. Purpose ambulance borrowing amount $325,000, maximum useful life not to exceed seven years. I further certify that the votes were taken at a meeting open to the public, that no vote was taken by secret ballot, that a notice stating the place, time, date, and agenda for the meeting, which agenda included the adoption of the above vote, was filed with the town clerk and a copy there and posted in a manner conspicuously visible to the public at all hours in around municipal building that the office of the town clerk is located or applicable in accordance with the alternative method of notice prescribed by or approved by the attorney general set forth in 940 CMR 29.3, parentheses 2, parentheses B, at least 48 hours, not including Saturdays, Sundays, and legal holidays prior to the time of the meeting and remains so posted at the time of the meeting that no deliberation or decision in connection with the subject matter of this vote were taken in the executive session, all in accordance with general law, chapter 38, sections 18 through 25, as amended by the clerk of the board.
All right. Good clerk impersonation right there. Russ Fox will make that motion.
Doug Mogul will second the motion.
All those in favor, Joe Didi, aye.
Russ Fox, aye.
Doug Mogul, aye.
And what this does is this just tells
And what this does is this just tells the Department of Revenue that, you know, we're gonna go for a bond that can go up to seven years for the ambulance that passed at town. It's, it's just like your mortgage, but it's for a piece of equipment.
Yes.
And because we're going over five years, we have to have a duration.
Gotcha.
Because you are God.
Thank you. All right. All right. Notation of retirement for D P W H E O Charles W. Wolf.
Yep, heavy equipment operation.
Chairman, just for the record, I'd like to note that Mr. Wolf was a member of one of the greatest classes ever graduated from Southwick High School.
Making.
Class of nineteen seventy-five, so. And he's retiring.
He's retiring.
Just to be clear, Mr. Fox, sorry. I'm just for the record, Mr. Mogul. Yeah, thank you. He's, he's a good guy, too. He's provided a great service to the town of Southwick in his many years of service to our town.
So do we need to make a motion to accept that? Or we can just take it?
Well, you just take it.
You can't keep them.
Right.
Unlike the planning board associate.
But you are, you are.
Vacancy post.
You are authorizing the vacancy, you know, pursuant to the terms of the union contract.
So we need a motion for that.
Yeah.
Russ Fox will make that motion. Doug Mogul will second.
All those in favor, Joe Didi, aye.
Russ Fox, aye. Doug Mogul, aye.
Approve chairman to sign off on S P D M O A for provisional officer extension.
Yep, that's for the duration of the last M O A is expiring, and you still have someone at the academy, and when they get out, they still have to go through their field training.
Russ Fox will make that motion, Mr. Chairman. Doug Mogul will second the motion, Mr. Chairman.
All those in favor, Joe Didi, aye.
Russ Fox, aye. Doug Mogul, aye.
Approve acceptance of E O P S S fire grant for eight thousand four hundred and seventy-five dollars.
Russ Fox will make that motion and thank the good governor and lieutenant governor for awarding us that grant. Second.
All those in favor, Joe Didi, aye.
Russ Fox, aye. Doug Mogul, aye.
Except resignation letter from historical commission member. Barbara Phelps. Need a motion to accept it or no?
Yes. Russ Fox will make that motion and ask that a certificate of appreciation be sent to Mrs. Phelps. Second emotion. Thank you, Barbara.
All those in favor, Joe Didi, aye.
Russ Fox, aye. Doug Mogul, aye.
Prove of Southwick can one day liquor license for Block Party on eight, seven, twenty, twenty-one. Let's hope they never remember to do this part. I saw the sign up like, oh, I hope it's in there. It's always a pain, don't forget. All right. Anything new with this? Well, it's the same old, same old.
Yeah, just a different date.
It's a different date, great.
Russ Fox will make the motion, this is something we do annually. Never had a problem, to my knowledge.
No.
They do, they do a good job.
They do a nice job, no? Yeah. Joe Didi will second that motion. All those in favor, Joe Didi, aye.
Russ Fox, aye. One extension.
Prove of monster truck event from the Wick three-three-eight, August twentieth, twenty-first, and twenty-second. It's happening in the back part of their pits, not on the track. So. Probably against the backwards.
Yeah, I, I read the thing from Rick Johnson, you know, and it looks like this is a company that comes in, puts on a.
It does.
A show on Friday night, two shows on Saturday, a matinee on Saturday, and Saturday night, and then a matinee on Sunday.
Right, there's no alcohol allowed.
There's no alcohol allowed. It's, I assume this is a family friendly event.
And it will have its conditions set by both the police and fire chiefs. So any motion approved, that should include meeting the requirements of the police and fire chiefs.
Absolutely. So I'll, I'll make that motion. Mr. Johnson has worked very well with this board and usually addresses very quickly any issues, and he does work well with our police and fire, so I'll make that motion. I'll second the motion, Mr. Chairman.
All those in favor, I will abstain. We do do some work at the motocross track at times with our food, so abstain.
Russ Fox will, aye. Doug Mogul, aye.
Thank you. Acceptance for Southwick Public Library.
It looks like we're getting seven thousand five hundred dollars, so Russ Fox will make that motion, Mr. Chair. Second.
All those in favor, Joe Didi, aye.
Russ Fox, aye. Doug Mogul, aye.
Are you showing the number?
That's what I read off of this. It was on the list. Seven thousand five hundred. Halfway.
Boston, I'm sorry.
They got a little bit more than us.
Not much, though. Actually, not much. I believe that is my sister. All right. We did the planning board. C O A request for basket donation for Welcome Back Day. Excuse me. Thursday, September ninth. Gift basket or door prize raffle from the Cindy Sullivan, the council on age.
Russ Fox will make that motion. Have the chairman work with the C A O on the amount. Ready? Second.
All those in favor, Joe Didi, aye.
Russ Fox, aye. Doug, you on? Sorry, I'm going back over the last thing. What was that?
Doug Mogul.
Aye.
Yeah. Did I screw something up on the last?
Just a point of order, Mr. Chairman. There's a second grant from the Sarah Gillette Services for the Elderly for three hundred and ten dollars on top of the big money from the state that we need to, from the feds, yes. Russ Fox will second that motion.
All those in favor, Joe Didi, aye.
Doug Mogul, aye. Thank you.
Thank you for fixing that. Okay. Board of the pure request to increase application filing fee. It's currently at two hundred and twenty-five, and they would like to go to three hundred dollars due to the increases by the Westfield moves and facing legal ads. There's only. Which I'm sure is not just the zoning board, right?
Same issue.
We haven't, yeah, I mean, you know, when I saw this one come through, I thought, well, I'd be interested in having the, you know, John and the planning board also look and see what their fees are and let us know.
We need to adjust.
Whether or not that, that, that should be the same for them, too. So if you could look into that gentleman and Jessica and let us know.
So.
Just, just so we can break even.
Yeah.
Russ Fox will make that motion to increase the application. I'll second it.
All those in favor, Joe Didi, aye.
Russ Fox, aye. Doug Mogul, aye.
Marissa, you might want to look at the Concom once, too. Okay. All right.
Designate C A O as primary F T R A representative and C O A chair, Paul, follow the blank.
Yes.
As the ultimate.
Russ Fox will make that motion.
Just for the.
Yeah, I'll second.
All those in favor, Joe Didi, aye.
Russ Fox, aye. Doug Mogul.
Okay. Letter of understanding between the town of Southwick and Robin A. Solak. Have you guys read it?
Yeah. Russ Fox will make the motion. Doug Mogul will second the motion.
Those in favor, Joe Didi, aye.
Russ Fox, aye. Doug Mogul, aye.
Okay. Anything else for new business?
Mr. Chairman, one thing here, donation.
Get you, it's a hundred dollars.
A hundred dollar donation.
I'll second the motion.
I'll make that a formal motion.
All right. Seconded, all those in favor, Joe Didi, aye.
Russ Fox, aye. Doug Mogul, aye. That's all we got. We got you, Mr. Chairman.
So, new business, anything else?
No, sir.
No. You could look under new business.
I'm good under new business. I just want to let you know, last week, I met with the Bartholomew Group with the treasure collector in the finance committee to get an update on our various types of trust funds, so those reports being generated as of June thirtieth, that will show you the the balances of those different trust funds and their rates of return under what's called the approved list from D O R on borrowings. So you'll be getting those reports, that's based on last week's meeting.
Okay.
Mr. Penau is vice chairman of the film company. Wonderful.
Anything else on?
Not under.
You're good. All I have, and I'm not listening to the new business, and Mr. Fox, I'm gonna hand this off to you.
Thank you, sir.
Only because it has to do with sewer, and every time I deal with sewer, and I think I do a good job, I come back here and I didn't do a good job. So.
You want me to get down into the?
No, 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 we're already in the sewer. That part's easy. It's an issue over a bill and maybe the sewer, the pump, the grinder pump maybe should or shouldn't be covered, and it broke, and the gentleman doesn't want to pay for it. So within a week or so, we're gonna be turning off its utilities. I looked at it a while back, but realistically, I'm soft. So, you got a week.
Okay.
Or you're showing them off, maybe you can figure things out and let us know. And I'm giving you authorization as a board world to deal with it. So if you can strike a deal, strike a deal, and not worry about coming back to us. You know what I mean? Because every time I make a deal or come back, it doesn't work. So you're apparently a lot tougher than I am.
All right.
So, right, so just deal with it, so that way we don't shut the guy's water off sewer off if we don't need to waiting to come back to our board in two weeks.
You got it.
Okay, thank you. Simple enough?
Yeah.
Right? Because that.
I will be working with the C A O, right?
Oh, absolutely. Just when I do it, like I said, I make it work, and then I come back here and it doesn't work. Which is fine, that's where I have to agree on everything. But when it comes to shit, we think we'd agree. Um, all right, approve. So that was new business we did there. So now we're on the whole business. The select board updating on meeting with D O T regarding the construction of the bridge in Westfield.
Mr. Chairman.
Yeah.
Finally had the meeting that we were trying to get during the pandemic. And I want to thank Senator Deos and Representative Goldiga for getting quite an entourage from Mass D O T out here. You know, the number one priority was the bridge. We talked about the impact that this detour was having on Sunnyside Road, Tannery Road, North Long Eric. We talked about the fact our fire department is now through mutual aid, taking care of Ward Five in Westfield because of the fire department in Westfield can't go over that bridge. It, it was, I thought it was Carl attended meeting also.
Yeah.
Thought it was a productive meeting. We didn't get any firm commitments out of it, but we talked about.
The expenses that we've incurred on doing repairs to our roads because of the the posting limits that that bridge rerouted traffic around it, which brought it into their side streets as long, as well as our side streets. So we're trying to get them to understand that that's what's called general conditions, and when you do a project, you might have a project defined scope in an area, but if your project is causing issues in other places, and that's been brought up before at construction meetings, then you need to make sure that you somehow reflect that in your project budget. We reminded them, we had done that a number of years ago, and Randy had to go out and do some work on the sunny side. So, so that's something we've asked them to look into with them, because this was the district director.
Right, and we, we didn't get a yes, and we didn't get a no, but they are, they are gonna review. The project for the bridge is, it won't be completed until twenty twenty-five. So it's a lengthy project. They've run into a few snags already, with some contaminated soil. My discussions that I've had informally with the mayor of Westfield, he told me the biggest thing is gonna be moving all the utilities. Where's Mr. Job? Did he leave already? Could he use them already? Right. But, but we did, like I said, we didn't get a firm yes, we didn't get a firm no, but they said they were gonna work with us. We talked about different things, like a temporary light at the intersection of Sunnyside and College Highway because of the large trucks exiting from there and.
The turning angle.
The turning angle. At the very least, they were made aware of that there's not a clear line of vision, probably because of all the trees and brush that's grown up over the guardrails. So people that are looking towards the north don't have a clear line of vision. So they were made aware of that.
College Highway.
Randy basically taught them all the.
Yeah, the guardrails and college. Different tree training.
Right. So they're, they're gonna be looking at that. From, from there, we went on to the, our favorite issue of Congamont Road. It's about ninety-eight percent complete as far as monies. And they did commit that there would be no additional charges that would come to the town of Southwick with the remaining issues with the contractor.
Right, because Mark was with them.
Right. But we didn't get into the nitty-gritty of, of Attorney Beglaine's conversations with them and our conversations with the other people involved in the project, so. But that was good news that we don't anticipate any additional charges.
And we're.
But we are still disputing the excessive charges from a contractor. That certainly wasn't a qualified contractor.
Yeah, the common, the Commonwealth is resolving any of the outstanding issues that the G C has claims on, but none of of those are going to result in anything coming our way. They would be handling that, and then I believe the G C is no longer an ongoing operation.
So that we will keep our lines of communications open. Senator Deos also attended the meeting, and one of the engineers is a Westfield person that Senator Deos knows from high school. So he said he would be reaching out to him informally to keep a subress to what's, what's going on, because this is a lengthy project, and it's gonna have a impact. It's already has a tremendous impact on the town of Southwick. That's it in a nutshell, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Concom coordinator job description update approval and post.
Can we carry that to the next meeting?
We're gonna have to, because I'm supposed to reach out.
To Chris.
And there's some emails back and forth now, I have some time to deal with it, so.
You do in your folder, you do have the latest version that I worked out with.
Yes.
Him and labor council and myself.
Okay. Get to him this week.
All right, so that's.
All right, road name change, Southwick Hill Road to Iron Horse Hill.
Yeah, I think Ben is working with Chief Landis to finalize a few things, so Mark, if you could just have Ben. Thank you.
Green energy program for town fuel efficient vehicle policy.
Yep, we are, uh, the policy, they've double-checked a few things, and I just need input from the police and one other department, and then we can finalize that.
All right. The store commissioned vacancy.
We have two applicants that submitted their names. Kirk Sanders, Preston Circle in Southwick, and Mark Rankin, Chiefmaster Rose.
How many openings do we have?
Right now, we got four.
Yeah. Make a motion for both of them.
Can we add Eric Davidson to that list?
Absolutely.
He, I, I thought for certain he had sent that out, but he had told me that he would like to do it, so we, we can do it next weekend, get him.
Right now.
Or we can just put him on.
Put him on.
Put him on. There you go. All right, so I'll make a motion for all three.
What are the other names, Mr. Fox?
I mean, Mark Rankin.
Yeah.
Kirk Sand.
Oh, Kirk Sand.
I believe they submitted.
Yeah, we have a.
Okay.
So that was a motion.
Second.
All those in favor, Joe Didi, aye.
Russ Fox, aye. Doug Mogul, aye. I think, I think we can take that off of the. We still got, they can even get room if anybody else wants to get on.
Barbara Phelps, you still have a vacancy. You're still.
It's seven, right, so.
Well, no, with your staffs.
All right, so we still got one big.
Medical building vacancies still exist.
Right, I mean, we're, again, people are on vacation, people aren't getting back, so, you know.
Yeah. School committee with Mr. Carroll. Appointments for town boards and committees.
We just did one.
What's that?
We just did one.
Yeah, yeah. Select board goals and objectives.
I think we were going to do a work session, weren't we?
Yeah. August sixth, night of Starfires game at Bullens Field.
Yep. And fireworks.
And fireworks.
I believe it's six o'clock at Bullens Field in Westfield. Plan ahead, you got to cross that bridge, everybody.
Yeah.
Let it go, it's on my list.
And then D P W Roads Projects Identification and Selection of Locations.
How did that site?
How did that go, gentlemen?
We had a grand time.
We had a grand time, Mr. Chairman. We knew we were out of, out of town, couldn't make it for our seven thirty A M meeting. But.
Wednesday morning.
Mr. Moe and I met with the D P W Director and the supervisor.
Yeah.
The D P W Director had submitted a list that we had all gone over previous.
Yeah.
And we did come to some sort of agreement based on limited number of dollars we have. We only have a million three hundred and eighty-two dollars to spend.
Doesn't go that far.
So the consensus was.
Three hundred and eighty-two thousand.
Three hundred and eighty-two thousand.
Is what we bonded for.
Right, one million.
Normally, we only have three hundred and eighty-two thousand.
Right.
Just pennies.
Right.
Okay.
So, and of course, it added up to about, I don't know, ten million dollars, something like there that it came up with. So we've agreed on finishing Hillside Road from Will Palmer to the town line with paving and drainage. We committed to doing part of more finding road, paving and drainage. We committed to crack ceilings, various roads. We considered, agreed to microseal Woodman Ridge, Tree Top Lane, Pinnacle Drive. We agreed to microseal North Pond Road and Alcoa Road. We agreed to Cape Seal, Granada Circle. We also, when we were in discussions about the crack ceiling and microceiling, we asked them to look at Fernwood, Birchwood and Pinewood. We also took a tour out to Meadow Lane. And the roads deteriorating rapidly, they're in the process of patching right now. But we asked about the possibility of some sort of treatment for those roads. And then we finished up with small drainage replacements. These are basically projects that will be taken care of ourselves. There are several locations on Fuss Road, several locations on George Bloom Street. There's one on Quas Anderson, one. And in essence, that would come up to approximately one million three hundred and eighty-two thousand dollars.
So that fits within that number, Russ?
What was that?
That fits within that number. We probably should have Randy come back with the formal list and vote on it, because we can't take an action unless that is a motion right there. If that is a motion, we could vote on that, in that list right there.
I'll make it a formal motion.
Yeah, because he wants to. I get it. So I'll second the motion, that's it.
Those in favor, Joe D D I.
Russ Fox.
Doug Moe, one eye.
So what wasn't on there that I wanted on there?
There was a lot that we all wanted.
Didn't make the cut again?
Yeah, I meant with Randy, the road to the transfer station.
That didn't make it.
Didn't that make the cut, Mr. Chairman?
It actually isn't our road. It's, it's not an accepted right. So, you know, I got the Randy smile, like, we can't really use those funds because it's not an accepted.
Well, we can't use chapter ninety five. We'd have, we'd have to take it out of any additional money. So, but what leads me to a question.
Yeah.
The monies that might be coming our way due to pandemic.
Right, but that first round of ARPA money is not for road infrastructure.
Okay.
For water, sewer and other types of things. And then, of course, when people are redoing those things, they usually do the roadway over it. But that doesn't lend itself to that location.
Well, we, the road to the transfer station.
Yep.
We have been trying to get water up to it for several years.
Oh, if you want to put a water line.
So if we put a water line in and had to tear up the road to put the water line in, we could pave over that road.
That you can do.
That was restoration of the service, right.
There is going to be a separate infrastructure bill for ARPA funds coming for just roadwork later. They're working on, that's part of what they're, at an impasse right now in D C.
I'm just throwing out an idea.
So bottom line was, the road needs to be completed, redone, so it's not going to be a quickie by any means. So I think we need to look at, which we've done in the past, what do we need to do to get that road accepted moving forward? Anyway, I don't know if it's a planning board world, or if it's, I'll do this.
Randy, because he, yeah. And because they got to, probably have to have it laid out, which means we'd have to. Here's the guy who does it, he knows how it all works.
And I get it, but I just, it's one word we've never dealt with.
You know, how we got here. We have figured out how we got here and then.
Yeah.
And then figure out what's the process from.
And I know it's not this year, but we should probably look at the process.
No, I mean, if you're going to do, if it's a water line, then you'd be able to store the road.
Understood. And I don't think we're moving to transfer station, right? So we really should get it accepted down the road here.
There's not too many areas that are permitted like that, that you can have that are.
Understood. Okay. All right, I'll, I'll move forward with that deal.
All right.
All right, so that's all set, you're good with your role?
Yes, sir.
Anything else under old business?
Hi.
Okay, let's let Carl go first.
Carl, you go. Yeah, I just want to let you, I've been working with our Channel Fifteen consultant, you know, Peter Cowles and also Jim and our managed service provider and finalizing the specifications to where I fit the three main rooms here at Town Hall that would be able to better support hybrid meetings. I mean, we've been, you know, doing these meetings the best we can, but they have certain limitations in the technology. So obviously, we hope that we're able to get these finalized specifications and that I can finalize things and then have them start ordering the materials and start going forward. And then that's one part of it. And then the other part will be the advice that Peter is going to give us, because Peter does run the Channel Fifteen studio in the city of Westfield, is very knowledgeable in terms of how he will put in different operating procedures and how we will run it. So until we get there, we're going to keep struggling with some of the things we've been dealing with, like we did tonight, and some other meetings. And of course, we'll always have the limitations of how many people can fit in a hearing room or in a space in our building. And when we have major projects such as what the planning board just went through, then we'll always, you know, we'll have to partner with the schools on those rare occasions. They were very helpful to us last week with that. So I just want people to be mindful of these things. You know, these are new laws. We only have so many dollars in our town budget, it's finite, so we have to figure out what it's going to take to, you know, bring all that technology and put it in place and manage it correctly. So just note that for your records.
Note it. Second, is that both of them?
No.
Okay.
The other one is the, the request for proposals for the design for the roof replacement for Town Hall and the H V A C issues that go along with it. That's going to be opened up on Thursday through the Regional Planning Agency. And I will note that in the last, you know, two weeks, we did have another issue with that twenty-six-year-old H V A C unit that's above the clerk's vault, where we had water again coming into the vault area and then going downstairs in the mechanicals. But the staff did a great job working around it, Hillary and her staff. Jim went down and did his stuff. And then, of course, Michelle and Jess had to address it. That's just further reinforcing the need to get this project not only designed and permitted, but to bring it to a vote for a town meeting appropriation next year to actually, you know, award a contract and undertake the work with the same cycle that we did for the fire station project. And that worked out well. So that's, that's the goal here, you know, because it's unfortunate that, you know, we have both leaks coming through the roof and leaks inside the building because of H V C coming down into certain offices. So it needs to be addressed, because this is one of the most important assets that the town of South has. Okay. Thank you. First, I just let Randy in, I didn't see a message for him to get in, so he's in here now. So we want to go back to the roads, I guess, after we can. First is, I just want to reemphasize to, as a, as a policy board, I think as we get this technology in place that Carl alluded to, we need to drive at this hybrid Zoom meetings, I still think. Some boards and commissions are sending the wrong, and I'll say wrong, but it's tough messaging when they have one meeting hybrid, one meeting only on Zoom, the next meeting's in person, and it gets confusing.
Is that what's happening?
Oh, yeah. And it gets confusing. So the law allows it, but it's still confusing as hell for residents to know whether I need to come down to Town Hall, this is on, it's on Zoom or it's only on Zoom, so I can't go down to Town Hall. And, you know, you can check the web agency, but I think each board should try to be consistent amongst themselves, at least until we have this all worked out. And if any board, and I'll, I'll put it out there, after working hours, if any board or commission chair needs, wants help on how to do hybrid Zoom or how to do, you know, both, you know, send me a note and I'll do what I can to help you, whether we got to get you, you know, equipment or licenses or whatever in order to be able to facilitate the hybrid. Because it's just tough. If you do hybrid one week or Zoom only one week and then in person the next week, it sends the wrong message.
Which ones doing that now? Couple of them?
There was a couple that have been, you know, or maybe they've just changed now and now they're going to.
Gotcha.
In, they were Zoom only, now they've gone to this. Ag, for example, did hybrid one week and then in person the next week. I get it, because of the technology, it's not, not faulting. I just said, we need to, as a board, set the policy and say we should try, you know, it should be our goal.
And if we can help them.
Yeah, absolutely. And if we can help somebody, we'd be glad to do it. Right? The second thing along the same, similar vein is Carl and I met with Westfield Gas and Electric again. The meeting was purportedly around the regional dispatch communication signaling and fiber communication and backup fiber communication, which went very well. But they also brought the new director of the G N E and another Mr. Sullivan, who's had four, five or eight, I had eight of his business cards last night, so now I have nine. But they want to revisit the high-speed pilot again in light of Whip City Fiber, in light of what they just did in West Springfield as well. So with the board's permission, we still do have the high-speed internet sub. I would like to call a meeting of the high-speed sub to have the G N E come back in and re-present what they have done, what, what other communities have done in the interim as far as a pilot program, and then also a financial model that might, might better help explain how the financing and funding of such a program would work going forward. I, from, and from my take on it last time, that the, the, the sub came back and we said it's eight million bucks, like, or it's like, and said, we don't have eight million dollars, and that was the end of it. I think they have a different model now, it's still going to be eight million dollars all in, but they show a way of how you get from here to there without it being a burden on the taxpayer. So I'd like to call, with the board's permission, I would like to call another meeting of the sub in order to gather that information, gather the new information, and then come back again to this board with a new presentation.
Doug, did you work with Mickelli?
We did, we did work with Mickelli.
Dan Mickelli.
Correct. And the other thing that, if, if that is successful, even preliminarily, the process to form the M L P is substantial, not costly, but time, time consuming. So it would, yeah, two successive town meeting votes, so we would need to move on that, even if we were going to do, you know, a staged implementation and rollout. You need to get that, that's the long form of ten. But I'd like, just like the board's permission to have a meeting with the high-speed internet sub.
Great idea.
Yeah. Doesn't mean it's sold.
No, 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 no.
No, I know.
But I just want to.
Me and you, and you know it's not sold.
In front of God and country here.
Ten minutes from now, it'll be.
Well, it'll be like.
They'll finally get what you're calling them, no matter what.
Absolutely.
So, oh, we got internet tomorrow, we don't. You just said two, two time meeting, but it's out.
Correct. But there is, the, the takeaway I got from part of it was, there is high, there is fiber in the right of way of the rail trail, right?
Yes.
That's adjacent to a development that's go proposal, proposed development going in and a development that's already gone in. That actually could be a pilot to understand what the take rate would be out of that. So if they, if they, if you were able to connect that without going on a poll over here over Dale, without needing that permission, you could then say, okay, hey, sixty percent of these people signed up, forty percent of these people signed up. Okay, takes, you can extrapolate some data from that. And without a big cost, without needing the M L P, because we wouldn't be on a poll.
Right, right.
So, and we're already going to have to channel, we're going to have to dig to get to the rail trail from the public safety complex as it is, in order to make the link back to Westfield Regional Dispatch.
Correct.
So it, the, the timing is good to revisit this issue.
Especially those, because like you said, when I'm on the pole.
True, and Comcast isn't getting any cheaper, Comcast isn't getting any better, and no one else has stepped forward that said that they want to wire up the town. So this is an. The grant, the grant that we got from the state on a regional dispatcher already includes that segment of construction from the rail trail to the public safety buildings to connect our.
Yes.
Buildings to the regional dispatch.
Right.
So that's, that's.
And when we talked to Westfield last, they were great, but in no real interest to go any further than that discussion, because they were now with twenty other communities. Trying to get that package going.
Right, right. But this is a moneymaker for them to.
We'll understand.
And also remember that in the, we talked a little bit about ARPA money, one of the ARPA allowed expenses is broadband infrastructure.
Oh, interesting.
Yep. So I don't know how that would figure in with the monies that we're going to receive against other spending priorities, that's.
Right.
We're part of the budget process, but that potentially, or, you know, by this board, but we could have that discussion once we have the information to present.
So please don't play a building lot on the golf course. So we don't get our ass chewed out.
No.
Bring an internet.
No.